To order our December the 10th Regular Board of Education Meeting. Could I have someone read the approval of the agenda, please?
Sure, I move that the Agenda of Monday, December 10th, 2018 Board of Education Meeting be approved as set forth and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Do we have a second to approve the...
Second.
Okay, okay. This is a roll call. I'm sorry. Laurel.
Director Anhalt.
Aye.
Director Janson.
Aye.
Director Meisterlin.
Aye.
Director Laberty.
Aye.
Director Borchtine.
Aye.
Director Jacobo.
Aye.
President Humbles.
Aye. Next, we have our Superintendent's Report and Board Reports, and Dr. Buck, we're looking forward to hearing about your report this evening.
All right, great. Thanks, President Humbles. So, we're excited to announce that Roosevelt Middle School's Lynn Johnson's been selected as Middle School Athletic Director of the Year by the Iowa High School Athletic Directors' Association. Lynn's relentless service and passion for middle school activities has been remarkable, and this is truly a very deserved recognition. Lynn will officially receive his award at the IHSADA Annual Convention on Sunday, March 24th, during their Sunday Evening Awards Dinner. Another exciting award goes out to Washington High School's Band Director, Mr. Jim Miller. The Northeast Iowa Bandmasters Association, or NEIBA, has recognized Jim as the 2018 Carl King Distinguished Service Award recipient. The Carl King Distinguished Service Award is given to someone who has made significant contributions to the NEIBA organization and school band programs. Jim directs Washington's Wind Symphony and is responsible for the Warrior Marching Band. Mr. Miller received this award December 1st at a luncheon hosted by NEIBA in Olwine, Iowa. Congratulations to Jim. I do want to take a moment to acknowledge that while we recognize a few individuals from time to time in my Superintendent's Report, I'm aware that there are others who may receive awards and recognitions of which I'm unaware. So, the bottom line is, if you're looking for a team of highly qualified, hardworking, and passionate professionals, you can find that with the Cedar Rapids Community School District. So, thank you to all who are doing this difficult and important work every day. Because we haven't had a Board meeting since before Thanksgiving, I thought I'd share with you some of what our students were up to in the days just before and after Turkey Day. Jackson Elementary held their third annual Jackson Day of Service just before the holiday. Several classrooms participated in service activities such as raking leaves for neighbors or collecting supplies for organizations including Waypoint and the Cedar Valley Humane Society. The weekend prior to Thanksgiving, more than 60 students from our district performed at the All-State Music Festival in Ames. The event's considered a gathering of the best of the best in high school musicians and vocalists, and we were well represented at such a prestigious statewide event. Also, Metro High School students and staff participated in their 44th Annual Turkey Day Feast, which involves Metro students preparing a meal for staff, students, alum, and invited guests. The event has grown from one which served a handful of people to more than 125. It's a wonderful opportunity to engage in creativity, communication, citizenship, and community building. As you know, we held our State of the District last week, and it was a valuable opportunity to inform and engage community members around our district initiatives. This year, we highlighted updates on our board-approved strategic plan, specifically as it pertains to workforce, our work around intercultural development inventory, facilities, profile of a graduate, and our story. And I indulge myself with a bit of fun encouraging the audience to participate in our cheer, which is every learner...
You're ready!
See, you're already on it. I love it. All right. I got to tell you this, though, the opening act, you see them there, Jefferson High School Chamber Choir was really the highlight for me. What a wonderful opportunity to be reminded of the reason behind all we do, which is our students. I wish every day could start with students singing us into our workday. Like, that would be really cool. Thank you to Jefferson's Chamber Choir for joining us on Friday, and to Choir Directors, Vocal Music Teachers Patrick Fagan and Nick Oswald. And with that, those are my comments.
Thank you so much. Any Board Reports? Gary?
Yes, Legislative Preview. There was, IASB had a webinar last week talking about the upcoming legislative sessions. First of all, some changes in some key positions. The House Ed Committee will be chaired by Cecil Dolichuk, and the House Ed Budget Subcommittee will be headed by David Kerr. In the Senate, the chairs remain the same. Amy Sinclair will be the Chair, and the Ed Budget will be Tim Cranbrink. The budget increase for FY 2019, there was 102 million increase from the March estimate in October. A key item coming up is on the 13th, the Revenue Estimating Conference will meet. Results of that conference will be used by the Governor and the Government Accounting Office to start the FY 2020 budget process. So, that's coming up a little later this week. It is, our lobbyists are predicting that there will probably not be much change from the October estimates, but we'll have to wait and see. Best guess from them was a 1% to a possible 2.5% for 2020. The 2.5% if they use the one-time surplus that would be in the budget. So, again, that's anybody's guess. We have heard the Governor say that she wants to do more for education. We'll see. Legislative Conference, excuse me, Legislative Session convenes January 14th. It'll be a longer session this year, 110 days, and IASB's Day on the Hill will be February 5th.
Thank you. Any other Board Reports? Now, we'll move on to Communications Delegations and Petitions. Did we receive any Greens...
I don't have any.
Okay, thank you. Since there are no requests to speak to the Board this evening, we will move on to our Consent Agenda. As part of our Consent Agenda, do any of the Board Members have items that they would like to pull for separate discussion and/or consideration? Do we have a motion and a second for the approval of the Consent Agenda as presented?
So, moved.
Second.
This is a roll call vote due to the Personnel Report.
Director Janson.
Aye.
Director Meisterlin.
Aye.
Director Laberty.
Aye.
Director Borchtine.
Aye.
Director Jacobo.
Aye.
Director Anhalt.
Aye.
President Humbles. Aye. Moving right along. Well, this is an information item, the Cedar Rapids Community Foundation. We have, we want to welcome Scott Draminski.
Don't worry about it.
Drazinski. Drazinski. Say it again.
Drazinski.
Drazinski. Okay. I was working on that. I still didn't get it right. Who is the current President of the School Foundation. Scott is here to provide us with an update of the Foundation's work. You're already at the podium, so, thank you.
Thank you, President Humbles and Directors. Appreciate your time, Dr. Buck, and citizens here tonight. I am the Chair of the Cedar Rapids Community School Foundation, and I know the Board is well-aware of this, but for individuals who may not be aware, we are an independent nonprofit organization led by trustees, and I've been blessed to have the chance to be part of that group. With me tonight as well is Karen Swanson. Speaking of blessed, she is our Executive Director, and we have been very lucky to have her in that role for several years and really helping our organization thrive as we help our students and the district to make sure that we are helping meet the goals of the district. I shared the last time that I was with you, I think in March maybe, that we did break $1 million in assets for the Foundation, and we're very excited about that. And as we wrap up the first year over $1 million, we are going to celebrate. So, you'll be receiving an invitation, I think you have a save-a-date already, for an event that will take place here at the ELSC on January 31st. We'll have community leaders, donors, staff, and alumni here to celebrate this milestone, and we'll be at that meeting working our way, launching towards our second million dollars. No pressure, right, Karen? No pressure. So, we are excited to celebrate, and we look forward to hopefully having many of you with us for that event as well. We are certainly always excited to be able to add to the educational experience for our students throughout the district. That's really what we're up to. Each year, the funds that we use go faster and faster even as our generous donors continue to offer us more to enrich student learning. Our Student Enrichment Grant funding, which is $35,000, that opened and closed in one month. All of those funds were used. And to explain that program, that's where teachers can have up to $250 of their own money that they put into their classroom reimbursed. So, that could be calculators, it could be a learning carpet, whatever is needed in that classroom, they put that in, they use their own money, and then as much as we can up to that $35,000 reimburse it. And that's just one example of many of the different programs that we have going on in the district, and the demand for those programs as well, so that we see that need grow. We want to thank you as part of our fundraising efforts, especially a big thank you this year to the Superintendent, Dr. Buck, and to our Cabinet, who were willing to be part of the Lip Sync for Learning event this year. I understand it was very close, and you might want to consider a recount request, but, or you're okay with that. I don't know. Yeah, People's Choice. You got the People's Choice Award, so that's all that matters, right? And I will tell you, along with the wonderful donors who made sure you won that award as well as the folks that were there that night, $13,000 was raised in that event. So, thank you very much. And I know many of you have been part of that over the last few years. It's really turned into a wonderful thing, and it's a fun, very fun night to be part of. And those costs are, or the, I should say, the money that's raised go to help cover the cost of us operating, so that more of our donors' money can go directly to serving our students here in the district. One of my favorite activities in my role is to get the chance to go to Senior Recognition Night. The last couple of years, I had a chance to do it at Jefferson, which is my alma mater, and hand out a big stack of senior scholarship checks, sorry about that, senior scholarship checks. And I've had a pleasure doing this. We, this year, handed out $36,000 in scholarships to 51 students who received those, and that grows every year. And we are greatly humbled by those who choose the Foundation to be the organization that manages these funds on behalf of their loved ones, the faculty or staff that they're recognizing. So, we greatly appreciate that and the opportunity to hand those out each year. Along with the district's strategic plan that was rolled out, we rolled out a strategic plan too in the Foundation. The core areas of investigation or effort continue to be the same for us, but we've really added to that plan. So, we've taken a look at how we maintain and grow our organization through strong financial and operational practices. You know, with over $1 million in assets now, one of the things we looked at, and of course with some of the headlines in the news, just making sure as an organization, we are a group that you, as a donor, can trust, and that we're doing the right things to make sure we maintain that. And so, we're looking at that and building upon the strong basis already there as a Foundation. We're also looking at ways to grow funding. We aren't just happy with that $1 million in assets, we're working on the second million dollars, and so, we're working to further grow this. And in fact, at our celebration, we are going to launch a new effort around, or a growing effort around our estate program and estate planning, and so, we're looking forward to that. From a marketing standpoint, we look at new ways to tell our story about what we're doing and the role we can play for those who are interested in supporting the district. And finally, we're working on focusing on new ways to reach out to our alumni and help them support projects in the schools nearest and dearest based on their history within our district. I want to thank you for supporting us and letting us be part of this effort to build up our students and prepare them for life beyond the Cedar Rapids Community School District. I did want to just briefly share with you, I like to do this every year, just to kind of show you the impact that the Foundation has. This here is a letter we received from Mrs. Long's AK Class at Vial Gibson. Thanks for the funding of our Student Enrichment Grant. We use our dollhouse and building materials every day during centers. The dust pans are helpful in keeping our sensory table area clean, and we're grateful for your support of our classroom. Ms. Bradley at Hardy Middle School, want to thank you very much for the SAFE grant. We used some of the funds this evening to transport students to a vocal music concert. Another student will be starting swim practice next week. The money all made the difference in the world in allowing them to participate. From Suzanne's Aunt at Metro High School, thank you so much for $88 to cover the cost of a set of 12 books purchased by LA9. Students are really enjoying the novel. Engagement is high right now, which is exactly what I was hoping from this particular book. So, that gives you an example of things. I got to give one more. So, this is Aiden. He is a student at Franklin Middle School, and he said, "Well, we went to the Fontana Interpretive Nature Center because you gave us the money to do so. Thank you so much for allowing us to go on this field trip. Without you, I never would have been able to go to Fontana. We learned how to use a compass, and it works like if a compass is near metal object, and then it'll point to that instead of the North Pole. You must turn an arrow to point the direction you want to go, and then to turn a little left arrow where the arrow, into an area where the arrow fits. It sounds really confusing, but it really isn't." So, he goes on, he provides a little feedback on catching butterflies, and I love the line, "The only feedback I have is that the butterfly catching was a little bland, and anyone in the front of the line was the only one to catch butterflies." But nonetheless, I know he had a good time, and it's fun to be able to read these and see the impact that our generous donors have had on the students in our district, and we love to be part of it. As always, Karen and I are available for discussion or to answer any questions, but again, thank you, Board, for the time tonight and for your support of our organization, and thanks for letting us be part of the very, very important work that's happening here in Cedar Rapids with our students.
We also need to thank you for all the work that you do, providing the support for our students. Truly makes a difference.
Well, thank you. And thank you on behalf of the trustees and Karen, too. That's a work well done. Thank you.
Dr. Buck, I believe you and Dave Nicholson are next on our agenda to present an update regarding the Architect Selection Process related to the Master's Facility Plan.
We are. Yep, thanks, President Humble. I'm just going to give a couple sentences, and I'm going to turn it over to Dave. So, you remember, I think it's, I believe it's our last meeting, giving some direction to move forward with the Architect Selection Process. So, we thought we'd come back tonight and just flush that out a little bit and show the Board sort of what we're thinking in terms of timeline and what we're thinking in terms of how that will play out by March. So, with that, Dave, I'll turn it over to you, and I think you have details, so.
Yeah. So, this is the process that we're going to follow in trying to select an architect for the Coolidge Elementary School. This is, we hope to get the RFP out on December 18th, and then we will actually have Friday the 11th deadline for them to submit questions to us and we'll respond. On Thursday the 17th, the RFPs would be due in, and during the week of the 21st of January, we'll review those in Selection Committee and try to narrow those down and schedule interviews for the week of the 28th. And once we, we'll narrow those down and go to the Facilities Master Plan on the 4th of February and say, "Here's our narrowed list that we think should go to the Board, have them review that." Then on Monday, the February 11th, we hope to have at least a top three come present to the Board, and then we'll bring them back, and then on the February 25th, we'll actually have the Board select. And in between the February 11th and the February 25th, if there's some additional information that we need to gather or maybe do a visit or something like that, we can schedule that in between those dates. And on March 11th, hopefully, we will have the contracts all worked up, and we'll be able to prove that and be ready to roll.
Can you, I think most of us understand this, but the Facility Master Plan Oversight Committee, what is that group? Who's part of that, and how is that different maybe from the group that was part of the process coming up with a plan?
So, there will probably be members from the Facility Master Plan on the Architect Selection Committee. There'll be some representation on that committee, but the Facilities Oversight Master Plan, that's the committee that takes a look at all of our projects that we have, PEPL and SAFE projects, and they're looking at that. So, we want their input. They have a lot of good information, and just, we want their input on this because they are helping us with all the oversight of all of our projects.
And that is a, yeah, that is a standing Board Committee that's been in place for a number of years, different from the Facility Master Plan Committee that was the group of 80 or so members of our community that helped guide the process for the Facility Master Plan itself, and I think that's kind of what you're driving.
Yeah, I think that's helpful for folks to understand.
So, is there listings somewhere of the folks that are on that committee in case people would...
On the website.
On the website?
Under the Board of Education.
Okay. That would be that. And this timeline, in a lot of ways, mirrors the process that we used for our Architect Record, so we've had some success, and that process went through. And this one, a little bit different, though, because we're going to bring some in front of the Board to finalize the process, so.
Yeah, that's a very small tweak from last time, so.
Looks good to me.
Yeah, it does look good.
Good.
Gary, did you have a question?
Just a comment, and I left this off of the Legislative Report. IASB is still very optimistic that the SAFE will pass this Legislative Session. We were kind of cautioned to be patient, though, because we have some new Senators and some new House Members coming on board, and it'll be a process of bringing them up to speed and so on, but still feeling very optimistic that we will be able to see it go through legislation this year.
Great.
Great. Anything else?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Well, now, next, Dave. I should have said, just stay right there. We'll provide the Board with the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report.
All right. I'll take this moment to introduce Jordan Valley. He's with RSM Auditors, and he's going to go over the report for you.
Thank you very much. So, we were going to go over the separate Board Packet. I believe you guys all have it here. This is just a brief summary of all the other information that you guys have, so the separate financial statements as well as our report direct to the Board. So, today, oop, I pressed the opposite button, and we're still going both back to that.
It's just a little bit trickery, like...
Oh, there we go. Sneaking a little extra slide in the middle. There we go. Always makes it exciting, right? First time somebody's here throwing an extra slide.
Hey, Jordan, welcome.
We were just testing you.
I appreciate that. Thank you. So, tonight, we'll cover required communication with the district officials, summarize the results for the year, as well as report on our state and federal compliance report. So, we'll start off by summarizing the report direct to the Board. And in here, we detail out our auditor responsibilities. So, there, we communicate that we are conducting our audit under generally accepted auditing standards as well as generally accepted governmental auditing standards. And under those standards, we feel like the district has presented fairly, and so, they have received an unmitigated opinion, which is the best opinion you can receive. And then, we also detail out if there were any change in accounting policies, which this year there was. GASB 75 was adopted, which is the change in OPEB. So, we detail that out. There was a restatement of your governmental activity funds, your business-type activities, and your non-major governmental funds. We detail that within the CAFER. There is no, there's no penalty for this restatement. It is due to a change in accounting standards. Previously, OPEB, other post-employment benefits had been reported on, kind of a pay-as-you-go, so the district would report the liability just basically for the next year. The Government Accounting Standards Board took a look at that. They decided to make the change to recording the full liability, so there was an extra accrual reported this year, which impacted your fund balance. We've reviewed management's judgments and accounting estimates. With those, we feel we agree. We detail those out within the report. Audit adjustments, there were none, so there were no changes to the financials from when they were presented to us, so a lot of this information that you'll see tonight will be consistent through what you saw from the end of the year. There were two uncorrected misstatements that we noted, both of which related to the five-year inventory audit that is done by the district, in that they noted there were some items that had been missed in previous years. They captured those and then reported them within their financial statements in the current year as opposed to when the assets were actually purchased. This resulted in an adjustment of $120,000 within the School Nutrition Fund, as well as there was a $10,000 entry to adjust the difference between the value that the service valued an asset at versus the value that the district actually purchased the asset. So, that adjustment has, or, we passed on the adjustment because it was, in the prior year, because it was corrected in the current year. There were no disagreements with management, no significant issues noted with management, and we did not encounter any difficulties in performing the audit. Sherry and Dave and their whole team were very well-prepared for us when we came on site, made it very easy and very cooperative to work through, which was very nice and efficient my first time working with the district, so I appreciated all of that. Are there any questions on the Board Packet? If there are not, we'll move into the district's financial results. We'll start by covering the governmental funds for the revenue. As you can see, there was only a $6.7 million increase overall for all governmental funds, so approximately a 3% increase, so very consistent with the prior year. The majority of that increase comes from local taxes. This is largely due to an increase in property taxes, and approximately $2 million of that relates to the new debt service levy, so this is the first year with collections there. Moving over to the expenditure side, overall, there was an increase of approximately $2.8 million, or only 1% increase. This increase is largely shown in instruction. There was a $2.2 million, or approximately 1.5% increase. This is largely due to purchases made by the SAFE fund for some technology improvements and recorded within that instruction category. We'll now move into your enterprise funds. Once again, largely consistent overall. As you can see, there was a little bit of an increase in non-operating revenue. This is due to the School Nutrition Fund and the federal funds received from that program. There was an increase of approximately $455,000, which is the main reason which drove that change in net position to now be sitting at approximately $620,000 over the $84,000 it was sitting at before, so a large increase there.
Is that due to more students on, like, free and reduced lunch, or is it just an overall increase in that nutrition fund? Do we have a sense? And if you don't know, that's fine, you can tell me, like, just email us later, that's fine, yeah.
It might be the free lunches or free breakfasts.
Community.
Yeah. So, just a...
The increase in the number of meals a day?
No, the schools that have, that have free breakfasts. The community.
Yep.
The whole communities. Schools. Schools. Are there any other questions related to the financial numbers themselves from the Moving on to the next section, this is the Compliance Reporting, so this is the auditing that we have to do under the government auditing standards. And within the district's financial report, we include our report on internal control over financial reporting. There were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies identified during the current year. There were several instances of non-compliance over state compliance. The first one is the Certified Enrollment. This is common for schools in Iowa. The state goes through and reviews the number of enrollment and then certifies it. There was an adjustment of 3.66 students. The state goes through and reviews the number of enrollment and then certifies it. There was an adjustment of 3.66 students. The next is uninsured funds deposited at a credit union. This is a repeat finding from the prior year. This finding was corrected during fiscal year 18. However, there were uninsured funds for 11 out of the 12 months. And the reason was, there was a, the district needed to pass a resolution in order to move the funding. So just running that through the process from when you actually notified to actually getting the funds moved took a little bit of time there. The next is the interest rate was not, was not in excess of statutory rates. So the state of Iowa requires that interests, or that funds deposited in certificate of deposits has a minimum interest rate. There was one out of the two that we tested that was below this. This was subsequently corrected after our audits and once the district was notified, they adjusted. And the last is we are required to report any deficit net position balance. And the daycare services fund has a deficit of approximately 1 million. This is largely due to the pension liabilities with, recorded within that fund. From a federal standpoint, we performed a single audit. There was one major program tested. We tested the Title I grants to local education agencies. This accounted for approximately 32% of total federal dollars spent by the district. The district received an unmodified opinion on the major program tested and no other compliance findings related to federal programs. That is all I've got as far, are there any questions regarding any of the compliance reporting or any of the other material throughout?
On the deficit net position balance, you said that was primarily, or it was in the daycare. Is that, explain that a little further if you could.
Yep. So the daycare has a negative net position. Let me open this up real quick, just so I can give you the numbers here. So they're required to have positive fund balance as with any fund in the state of Iowa. And so they have, are sitting with approximately 1 million of negative fund balance. But they also have approximately $970,000 of pension liabilities recorded there. So there's very minimal after that. The reason they look at that is being an enterprise fund, they like to see them be self-sustaining. But once that standard came out, there was a large liability that the district had not been planning for, not been budgeting to absorb that kind of a liability sitting in that fund. So that's why that's currently sitting there.
Okay, so it basically, it's a potential liability with retirement benefits. It's not a, it's not, it's a projected, I guess.
Correct. Yep, this is actually determined. And I actually misspoke. I read the wrong number, not 9.6. It's actually 2.7. Sorry about that correction. So the liability is 2.7 million for benefits. So if that was removed, then this would have a positive fund balance.
We don't have to go into here right now, but maybe Dave, at some point, you can help the board understand that and what we're doing to work on that. And again, it doesn't have to be right now, but.
Just real quick. You know, to be quite honest, we're very fortunate. We only have one fund that is in a negative position. Because a lot of times you'll have your student nutrition fund, when you record these liabilities to that, your OPEB and then the IPRs liability, that generally, that will actually push you into a negative position at times. And so I say, we are very fortunate. We only have the one account that is in a negative position. And I don't get too worked up on that side of it as much, especially if nutrition fund, we show negative because of that. Because that's a lot of extra dollars that we would have to, having our balance to recoup all of that. And I would not have an expectation saying, yeah, we need to get to that and fully recoup that because of these liabilities. So when I run numbers and different things, I look at these without those liabilities in there right now for internally. But I understand that we have to book these because of requirements that we have to do, so.
Yeah, so I think, you know, as a, as a board member, sorry, but as a board member, I'll get asked from constituents, public about this now that it's part of this open meeting. And so, again, understanding that we shouldn't be that concerned about, about it. But again, there is this negative number out there. And again, if you could just put something in writing to us, I think that would help explain that and where the district is going to make sure that that is covered in the future. That would be helpful.
And I do want to clarify, this is only in the nutrition and daycare services fund because they are on that full accrual basis. So all the other funds are on that modified accrual. So the current measurement focus is opposed to the full accrual. So that's why all the other funds do not carry the same liability that the nutrition and daycare services funds do.
Any other questions from the board?
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
This is an action item and we need you to approve it. So all of those in favor of approving the report, please signify by saying aye. And those opposed, same sign. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's it. Thank you. Moving on to our learning and leadership section, Lynda will now provide us with an update on the work that's being done in the HR department, which ties to the future-ready workforce. Lynda?
Good evening. Hello, everyone. Yes, so I get to do the HR update today. And we're going to focus a little bit in the workforce area. So I'm going to talk about some of the work that we've been doing with our workforce and really focused on our, a couple of different areas. One is our employee engagement groups that we have, sub, our subtask team, and then our diversity. So I'm going to give you updates on all three of those areas. You might recall, we implemented the employee engagement work groups as a product of our negotiation process. So last year, when we were going through the negotiations, we identified some areas in which we needed to hear more voices and get more perspectives in some of the, the areas and problems that we wanted to try and solve. And really looking at it from a lens of our entire workforce and ensuring that we have consistency and equitable policies and procedures across the board. And so we put a call out to our employees to ask who would like to be part of these groups. And we have three groups that we're focusing on. The first one is implement weather policy. That's fun. The leave of absence policies and procedures. And then the last one is the teacher professional learning process. And I'm so pleased to say that we've had over 70 people who have volunteered for these programs. That's just phenomenal. And this is all, again, a voluntary situation. They're coming in after they've had a very long day and focusing on some really hard, difficult topics for us to kind of get our head around. And we've been very blessed to have a very good cross-functional group of people. So we are experiencing in all of these groups, the first two, I should say, where we have the majority of our work groups represented. And I've gotten such positive, positive comments from people about these programs, the structures of them, and just the opportunity for them to share with one another, learn from one another, and truly dive in and understand some of these policies and procedures that maybe they haven't had visibility to in the past. And they're coming up with some great recommendations. And we will be coming back, probably in the March timeframe, with those recommendations and some of the solutions that we're coming up with. So some really, really great work going around the employee engagement groups. Before I move on to the subtask team, are there any questions on the engagement groups?
Just to clarify, you did say that most of our work groups were represented within these work groups?
Yep.
Good.
The only exception to that one is the teacher professional learning, just because of that topic. It's, it's very much targeted towards that group.
Sure.
Yep, absolutely. So the next update that I have for you is the subtask team. And the subtask team, I would say, you know, over last year, we did a lot of work around creating recommendations for what we wanted to do around the subtask team. And I would say probably the two highest themes that came out of there was how do we make people feel when they come into the district? How are we creating that experience for them? As well as the big one that we really got a lot of momentum around was hiring full-time subs in the buildings. And what you have here is a collection of quotes from our building administrators and our teachers in regards to how that experience is working for them. And it's, it's incredible. It's, they're, they're super positive about the experience that they're having. We've hired over 37 full-time subs. And what we're hearing is that it is reducing the distraction. So where people were being pulled previously, at the last minute, a counselor, an IDS, principal, teacher is being pulled into a classroom to cover. They've got this full-time sub that's able to take care of that for them. And so they're able to plan a little bit more effectively. As well as what you'll see in the comments is that, that the classes don't need to be split as often. So they're not having to disrupt the students either. So students are able to stay in their classroom. And probably one of my favorites is that it is having an impact on morale. And so the, the teachers do feel very much supported in this process. And we continue to, to look at that and understand where we might be able to add more and really looking at the numbers and that type of thing. So very positive responses from this. And I think one of the other stats to kind of mention is our prep time. So last year, we heard a lot from our, our teachers in regards to their prep time and that they were losing their prep time because they had to go in and sub. That's down by 50%, 50%. That's phenomenal. So that really goes a long way to help our teachers as well.
It's really great to see all these positive, the positive comments and how it's impacting the teachers and assisting them to have full-time subs. That has truly made a difference.
Yeah, I think it was a really good first step out of the gate to, to try to cover for them and show them support. And then over the summer, we had a lot of our buildings adopt and review how are they welcoming the subs into their buildings or their guest teachers into their buildings. And many of them made very positive changes in regards to what their practices were and some of the things that they've done. So we've done a lot of sharing in regards to some of that, too. Yeah, good stuff.
So with this task force, Lynda, is this something that, you know, once everything, all the changes, recommendations are implemented, they'll kind of step away and that's it? Or is it something you plan on continuing on a going-forward basis to?
It's a great question. I don't, for me personally, I don't see this going away for a while. Because I feel like this is something that's, we're always going to have a lot of work around. And I think what we have to do as a group collectively is really decide what that team makeup should look like and what our purpose is as a team. And then get very focused on one or two things that we want to do each year and try not to boil the ocean and do a whole lot of things, but really start to focus on, like this year, you know, we're focusing on the full-time subs and how we're greeting. So next year, maybe we pick one or two things that we really want to focus on and try to get some results that way. I, I see it as more of an ongoing, although I haven't told the team that, so they might be surprised by this.
I, I think that's, you know, some, some good results. But I, I appreciate that you're going to continue to work at it. We still have, if you still have 50% that are still losing their prep time. That's pretty valuable time for teachers in the classroom, so. And particularly now as we get into the flu season and some of the other things, this is when we're, we could see more absentee. So good, we're moving in the right direction. I hope we continue to see some, some progress.
I agree. I agree completely. And you know, another stat that you may not be familiar with is we've actually approved 170 new subs this year. So we've got a lot of subs in our system. We, we just have to figure out how we can better utilize them and where they're at and what their interests are. So we've got lots of great work, lots of great ideas happening within this team, so.
Well, it's good, it's a, it's a great start and we'll move forward.
Yes.
And I think that's, that's a plus.
Yeah, agreed. Thank you. All right. So with that, I'm going to take a minute. And Joy Briscoe is going to come up and give us a little bit of an overview of some of the fantastic work that she's doing within the diversity and inclusion area. Just as a, by a reminder, there are four focus areas that we are focused on, which is strengthening our community, looking at our recruiting practices and everything that we do from the first time that the candidate is introduced to the district, all the way through their onboarding program. And then we're looking at the grow your own programs, the pathways for our students to get into education, and then enabling and empowering our, our work staff. And Joy is going to come and talk to you a little bit more in depth about some of the wonderful work that she's been doing and some of the connections that she's been making. And what is it, 30 days maybe you've been in your role?
Over 45, a little bit.
45 days. And let me tell you, she, I think, knows pretty much everybody in the community already. So she's, she's made a great first impression. So I'm going to turn it over to her and let her talk a little bit. You're welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I'm very, very excited to be here. Hired on as a new diversity program recruiter with the HR department. I'm just ecstatic about the opportunity, just to actually create the best learning environment possible for our students in one of the best districts in the state, or the best district in the state. And so I definitely, I just could not be more ecstatic about being a part of the program. And so one of the first things that Lynda and I did when we started meeting was, we decided we would come up with the vision for the diversity and recruitment and retention program. And so, am I going to go the right way? Let's see. There we go. So right there is some of the vision that we came up for. Diversity is important because we want to provide the best experience possible for our students in their learning environment. And so as we go forward, we want to spread that message that that's why we're doing this. That's truly why this is so important. It's important because as our children graduate, as they learn in our communities and in our school buildings, we want them to be as prepared for their future as possible. Or we want every, what is it, every learner? All right. Thank you, Dr. Buck. And so, once we had that vision, of course, you have to have a vision because that's kind of the roadmap for where you want to go, right? We came up with our goal process. And our goal was that we want to develop and strengthen positive relations with our community. We want to engage and retain a talented workforce and create workplace where each employee is enabled and empowered to contribute their individual talents to deliver on our vision of every learner future-ready. I'm very gimmicky, so I absolutely love the every learner future-ready. And of course, if we want to actually start working towards where we're going, we got to take a look at where we're at, right? And so, because we know that studies show that diversifying the teacher workforce is the best experience possible for all of our students, where we at currently. So currently, 6%, 6% of our workforce is ethnically or racially diverse, whereas 3% of teachers to 35% of the student body. So of course, we've got to minimize that number. We've got to decrease that number. We have to do that because that's important for us to truly reach our goal. And so we started with recruiting efforts. Very, very important, right? And so definitely, there's a phrase where you say, reach the low-hanging fruit first. I thought that that was truly, truly important. There were some things that we identified right out the gate that would help us reach our efforts. We didn't have an Indeed Careers page, so Lynda and I worked to create that because right now, whenever anybody's looking for an opportunity, one of the first places they go is Indeed. And that's becoming more and more apparent for the business of education as well. So we created that Indeed Careers page. And we put not just teacher opportunities on there, but other opportunities for the district. And lo and behold, we had over 120 candidates actually submit resumes to us via Indeed. So that was immediately a talent pool that we just had to tap into. There was a new Teachers-to-Teacher application that came online that's free for districts right now. And so we decided that we wanted to maximize that as well. And through that new Teacher-to-Teacher's application, we've already contacted 42 prospective individuals for our district. I mean, there is some great, there's a great quality of candidates on there that's local and also out of the state as well. So that's been phenomenal as well. In addition to the Teachers-to-Teacher site, I also, we created the career page. And then we posted five district opportunities to three additional sourcing sites. Just making sure, the way of the go is technology. Everybody, when they look for opportunities, they go directly to their phone and they go online. And so that's where our presence needs to be if we really want to reach people. And this is another interesting one. As Lynda mentioned, we've been taking looks at our, how we're doing our current hiring practices. So in our AppleTrack system, today, if someone hired a candidate, there might be a second or third candidate that was a good candidate that we didn't necessarily stay engaged with. And so we've been working on building that pipeline of, maybe you weren't the right fit necessarily for this position, but that doesn't mean that we don't want you in the district in another position. And so from that, we found 20 more additional potential candidates for our district as well. And a good percentage of those were diverse candidates as well. In addition to that, we've connected with ZipRecruiter. And this has already resulted in five qualified candidates for our district. So doing this work, grabbing that low-hanging fruit, we've already gotten, we've had a couple interviews. we've had a couple interviews last weekend, interviews coming down the pipe. So, and then, and I promise, because Linda knows I can talk. So I said, I was practiced at home, so I can get through this, but. And so our next steps is, we definitely want to maximize our social media. We've got over six thousand people on our Facebook page. So we're playing with the idea of actually creating a Facebook page that specifically relates to opportunities with our school district and states our vision statement and where we're trying to go and what we're trying to do. Again, enhanced our recruiting process. Attended, we're trying to attend up to seven career fairs. I've already attended two career fairs in Des Moines already. And we have at least three more scheduled. And that's going to be not only in Iowa, but externally as well. We realize if we're going to diversify that pipeline, we've got to go outside of our, just the Iowa borders and try to build those connections as well. So we're reaching out to schools, building those pipelines and those relationships prior to us arriving. And so that, once we get there, we can have some candidates to interview. And then we're going to increase advertising efforts and in marketing areas where they cater to diverse audience, like Courta careers and things of that nature. And we're going to continue to identify and utilize the best sourcing opportunities for the district. This one was one of my funnest ones. I'm a talker, so community outreach is part of our plan as well. And so I've conducted over twenty meetings with people in the district and outside the district to get their input on how they think we're doing and what they think we need to do and what are some of the barriers into us retaining diverse talent. And so what I found is they feel like for minority and marginalized populations, we need to work on creating a sense of place and possibly leadership tracks. And so we're working on things with that as well. And then this was also a fun one. We worked on strengthening existing relationships and programming. In a district like ours that is doing fantastic work, we were already doing some great things. We met with Dr. Buck and talked about some of the Grow Your Own programming that we are already doing. There's a Panther Promise where they're coming up and taking students from Jefferson and Wash and bringing them to the University of Northern Iowa. And then they also have a U-Met program, which that's their College of Education, where kids go for free and they can stay for free to minimal cost. I don't want someone to say, it costs us a little bit, Joy, but it's very, very low, where kids actually go stay a week at the College of Education and get exposed to teaching curriculum. And these are things that we are already here doing. We have been doing the last year, and they'll be happening again this year. And so building on those things, our next steps is going to be to maximize those type things, explore new networking opportunities. We're going to partner with I C R to develop a spouse employment program. One time, there was an example of a principal that would have been idea for the district. And she had a husband who worked in a company or kind of manufacturing-type work. And they didn't come because he didn't know that there was jobs here for him. Now, where else could he go and have more opportunity? And so we don't want that to happen again. And so making sure we work with organizations that we say, hey, we got a great teacher, you know, and she has a, or she, him or she has a spouse that could actually work at Rockwell or something like that. We want to build those connections. And it was really great because in turn, they said, well, Joy, what if we bring somebody into Rockwell and they have a teacher spouse? Would you guys take them? If they're a good fit, we would definitely want to see them and talk to them and build those relationships. So they're really excited about those partnerships. And then we also want to continue to join key organizations as well. And of course, Grow Your Own. Again, I was excited that we are already doing Grow Your Own. We already have some dual credit programs going on with a lot of our colleges. And so we want to continue on that. We want to build on that. We're going to work with Paul Hayes to identify more students that have the potential to make great teachers in our districts. And we're going to, we've been researching national, regional high school programming so that we can literally have one of the best Grow Your Own programs in the country. That's our goal. And then we're going to work on developing workplace learning connections as well. So we've been working on this stuff, these things to date. I met with a community foundation. They've talked about even doing a teaching scholarship for students graduating. So we've got some wonderful, wonderful things coming down the pipeline, so. And then also, another program with I C R, we want to make sure that when people come, we know they're going to be supported within the school district. But you need to know your community as well. So I C R is going to work with us so that we can make community programming so that people can know about all the great things we have going on in Cedar Rapids, so. And then if you just want to stay connected with us, of course, here are some of our social media information. And I know I covered a lot of information very quickly. Did anyone have any questions?
I'll just say, you've been really busy.
Yes, I have.
And I think that's important, getting connected. You've made a lot of progress. I mean, you have been very busy for the forty-five days that you've been here. And I can appreciate you connecting with the community and the surrounding schools, too, and what you are doing. And you have been doing quite a bit.
Thank you, President Humble. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I have a question. Has any thought been given to employee resource groups? I know Collins Aerospace has employee resource groups and Tata does as well. Has there been any thought given to that within district?
Yes.
So that's a great question, Jennifer. Yes, visioning, from a vision perspective, I think down the road, that is definitely something that we want to consider, at least explore, try to understand how that may or may not fit within our district. As you can see from what Joy just presented, we have a whole lot on our plate right now. And so I would look at that from a face-to-face kind of approach. But definitely, if you think about the whole roadmap, holistic approach, it's certainly something we want to explore at some point.
I just want to say, thank you. Both of you, we've worked on some of these ideas for a long time. And this is as concrete of progress as I've seen. So thanks to all of you and welcome on board.
Thank you so much. I am so excited to be here. Linda and Dr. Buck, I've met with President Humble. I mean, everyone's been so great about providing input and being, giving realistic feedback as to what we need to do. And I really, really appreciate that, so. And we'll keep you up to date, definitely.
Thank you. Well, each year, the board reviews the calendars, our calendars, the drafts of our calendars. Dr. Buck and Noreen will walk us through the proposals for both the 2019-20 and 2020-21 school years. Dr. Buck and Noreen.
Yes, so I'll just give you a quick, the quick thumbnail is, school calendars are always complex. The way the non-negotiables in this calendar fall have added a whole new level of complexity for the next couple of years. But the good news is, after these next two years, it gets a little more flexible again for a little while. But Noreen, she's been doing a lot of work around this. I think she's going to talk about some of those non-negotiables and some groups we've had this calendar in front of already and gotten some feedback, so.
So thank you very much. And I want to make this more of a workshop, so I'm going to stay where I'm at, if that's all right, so I can take notes as the questions surface. But you can see, there is, it's hard to see on the screen, but you have drafts in front of you. I think it's been a while since you've had a multi-year calendar proposal brought to your attention. And so our greatest hope is to look at both the upcoming year of 1920 as well as 2021. Dr. Buck is correct that we have some restrictions that we have to live by within any calendar year. But next year, just the way the dates fall within those restrictions makes it a little more challenging. So just as a reminder, we gave you just a kind of a T-table chart in your board packet about what are the required things that we have to make sure that we accomplish every year within a calendar? And then what are some things, I call it the wiggle room. We got a little wiggle with some things, but not a lot. So just as a reminder, we have, as a district, have chosen the option of instructional hours instead of instructional days. So we have to meet that requirement of one thousand eighty instructional hours for students. And that also, we cannot start our calendar before August 23rd. And that's part of our legislative mandate. And so in addition to that, sometimes what people forget about is, in addition in the code, our high school seniors cannot have fewer than five calendar days than everyone else. We have the option of placing graduation wherever we'd like, but we choose to put it on Memorial Day weekend, and that's where it's been. So think about graduation weekend and count five days after that. That is where we have to land the school year for everybody else in K through eleven. So that restricts us, restricts us on the back end. Just as a reminder, if we have snow days and whatnot, that's some circumstances where we have the wiggle room, I guess you could say. But on the actual approved calendar, we can't have more than five days for everyone else. And so the front end of the year is August 23rd. The back end of the year is five days after graduation, which then you have, you have to live within these bookend days. Our staff has contracted for a hundred and ninety-one contract days. So you may have a staff day that students don't report on. And so we can only have so many of those days as well on the calendar. And then we, as a district, really believe that professional development is the way for us for improved practice. So we have four professional learning days that we also put on the calendar. And then staff progress reporting days, we have four of those as well. Just as a reminder on the progress reporting days, if you color code, look at the color codes. There's the orange color, those are professional learning days. And then there's that canary yellow color, those are the staff progress reporting days. So our teachers, who work so hard of providing feedback to students, they do that through multiple avenues, through progress reports and via grade reports and transcripts. But they also do that through face-to-face conversations with families. And on their conference days, that is usually taking place after their contracted workday. So many times, our staff progress reporting days, they've done a lot of the work when those days come. And so this is what some might call a comp day, which we call it a comp day within some of our working environments. However, technically, it's staff progress reporting time. So teachers aren't necessarily required to report on those days because they've been doing that work or they may be choosing to do it through their technology via other places. So there's four of those days as well. So when you look at the calendar and the way it falls next year, it's just kind of funky. That August 23rd date starts on a Friday, which we, you know, could have thought about that. But we have some other things that are highly leveraging within our system. We are adopting a new student information system. So we need to help front-load our teachers around that. Our, all of our work on our school improvement plans, if we could give our teachers time together to learn, to prepare for the kids to come, we thought that instead of having an early-out Friday and starting kids on a Friday, let's use that as a learning day for teachers to make sure they're prepared with some of the new initiatives that we have coming in front of them. And so therefore, that's why we're starting on a Monday. So it's an early-out on a Monday, and then we will continue to have our early-out Fridays. So kids start with an early-out and end with an early-out in that first week of school. I'll fast-forward, some of the other stickiness came around winter break time. Twenty-third falls on a Monday. So we could have made that a student contact day and made it an early-out or something to make it a student contact day. But that felt kind of icky. So our past would say that students have not reported that close to the holiday break. So we chose to make that a staff reporting, a progress reporting day, which means, again, that would be that canary yellow day. Martin Luther King Day is also a canary yellow day. The nice thing about that, it's falling very close to the second semester. But in addition, usually within our elementary schools, they're having their conferences right in early February. So they would have time to prepare for those conferences at that time. And then, then it's a heavy spring. And then we can't have more than five days after that graduation time for seniors. So it is what it is, but we are very open to feedback. This is the first draft. We hope to bring back a certified copy for you to approve through a hearing process next month. And then just a few comments on the 2020 calendar. It's a leap year, so it's also an interesting thing to juggle. And then we still have the twenty-third falls on a Sunday that year. So we really can't start till Monday, the 24th anyway with kids. And still, some of the, the way that things fall with the holidays, it just got a little awkward. So as we look at the August 23rd, starting a little later, I think we'll have a little more wiggle room in the years to come. As that's the good thing. The years are different year to year. And so we have greater opportunity the following, the following year in 21, 22. But very open to questions and feedback.
I wish my kids were going to school next year because I like the starting on Monday. I don't think I could convince any of them to go back, but.
Hey, they can visit.
I love that.
Okay.
I think.
Yeah.
So one of the things you may hear feedback on, just as a, so we've had this before the cabinet. We've also had it in front of the superintendent's teachers cabinet, so about thirty-plus teachers from across the district.
And I think C R E A has had.
Yeah, C R E A, so Tanya Johnson, C R E A president, has been a part of this process all along as well. So one of the things you may hear comment about is, people are fairly used to a canary-colored day sometime in late February, sort of post.
Yes.
Conferences. But one of the things we've learned is the conference window is maybe a little more broad than we originally understood in terms of when those fall, based on middle school, elementary, and high school. And the resounding solution to the December 23rd day was to move the February Canary Day to December 23rd. So there typically is sort of a Canary Day in late February. And people felt like better to move that to that December date with the realization and acknowledgement that, you know, spring break's not that far around the corner from that late February Canary Day, so.
And also to note that Martin Luther King Day has not always been a canary yellow day for us. And so we thought that was really important, that staff would have options on that day to recognize that holiday. And our students don't report. So sometimes it's been a professional development day. But that, so swap it out, whether it be December 23rd or Martin Luther King Day, they, we did lose that, that yellow day in February. However, if our conferences are a little earlier in February, which I think we have the opportunity to do that since our elementaries only report twice now for their progress reporting, that would be an opportunity for us to consider moving our conferences up just maybe a week or so, that conference window.
Seems reasonable to me, so.
Well, this is just our first look, so.
First look. And so please, if questions surface or you hear things, we're going to push this out to a greater audience, too, within our staff, get feedback. But they also need to know, there's, we just have limitations of what we can and can't do.
Right.
And I know that our mandate is ten eighty. What, what does the calendar represent?
That's an excellent question. So we have an excess of hours. We have more excess hours in the high school than we do in our other levels just by the way our bell schedule runs. And so we have an excess of about twenty-five hours in elementary and middle. And then an excess of more like forty hours almost in high school. So when we have a snow day or an inclement weather day, that allows us to say, we're okay for a day, maybe two. But if we start chipping away and we take it down to zero, we, we do lose significant instructional time. So we just want to be careful about that. It is the benefit of having hours instead of days.
Along that line, Noreen, when we, like what happened recently when we had the elementary out and not the high school, does, is each grade level here to adhere to those hours? Or is it an average of the district? Or if we have one section, if we have one level in, will that count?
Excellent question. And we act, maybe I'll have you because you're the one who asked the question last week and can respond to that. But we did have some learning around that last week. It was a unique situation for sure. But in the end, the day counts for the kids who were in attendance. The day does not count for kids who were not in attendance.
And so the, the actual math of that is, you go to the school in your district that has met the least number of hours as the guide for the thousand eighty. So we were twenty.
So it's not instructional level, it is the district as a whole.
Right. So we were twenty-six and a half hours, I think, ahead at the elementary level. And we're forty-some at the secondary level. But by losing those six and a half hours of instructional time, we only have twenty hours to play with as a district now, even though there's additional access at the middle school and high school. It goes to your lowest attending, and even by school, if you were to actually have a circumstance related to school, which would be unusual, but.
Well, and I just wrote down a question on here that, that kind of is a follow-up to that, is at what level do you let that get to before you start rescheduling days?
Yeah. So we have kind of played that by thumb over the last several years. And this sort of predates me, too. When, when we get into the hours conversation, we kind of keep an eye on how many of those hours have been late starts or early dismissals, especially for like cold, and how many of them have been full days. So like last year, we actually still had some excess time, but we had missed either two or three full days. So we actually made up a full day, even though we had X. So we actually made up a full day, even though we had ex, still had a few hours, because we had lost some full days relative to the total. The other thing that it impacts is our hourly staff, when we're not in session, they're not getting paid. So another part of the balancing act for us is trying to honor, one, we want the kids in school because it's important, and trying to honor getting our staff paid, especially as our hourly staff. So there's a lot of moving parts as it relates to trying to make up time.
And we do look at the year in a split in half, especially at the high school level by semester, and it's really hard to keep the semester hours balanced. And so if you think about a semester course, and you've lost, you know, six days in January at the first start of the second semester, that does impact some of our decision-making too, because we've got to get through the curriculum and the learning with the kids.
And seniors.
They love snow days.
Because, because the five rule, five-day rule thing is off at the end of the year, so.
Although, you know, that would be a monument of for discussion. I think the class of 89 Jefferson did not graduate on Memorial Day weekend. As I can, I know that, I have the date in an archive at my home.
I don't want to prolong the discussion, because there's some important events that are going to happen this evening at 7:00, 7:15 or whatever. We have a Monday night football game. Anyway, does that mean though, that if one school, let's say an elementary, have a water break or something, and that school is out, does that mean that the whole, that affects the whole district?
Yep.
Wow.
That sounds like a legislative fix that ISB needs to work on, Gary.
I would think so.
Yeah. I, I, I did want to say thank you to Dr. Buck. I had so many positive comments about the email that you sent out to the entire district and community and parents about why and what all went into the decision you had to make on that very strange weather day. And so kudos to you, and, you know, that when we hired you, we knew that you were going to be the, the guy to have to make those tough choices in the long run, so the buck does stop with you. But to understand all that goes into that decision is, was pretty amazing. The, the other thing I had a question about, and we may ask this every time, but, so I know there, there are families that may have suggestions or ideas, or want to know how to comment about the two years of proposed calendars. What's the best way for families and parents to give us that feedback? Besides, I mean, obviously, they can come to a board meeting and do that, but is there a way to do that that's the best?
Well, what I'm imagining is that this calendar will broadly broadcast, starting tomorrow, both calendars. So one of the ways it'll happen will be through social media and also on our website. And there is a mechanism on our website that allows people to provide feedback for us, so that would be one way. On another way would be obviously just through any type of social media outlets, or pick up phone calls.
Great, thank you.
They can come to the board meetings.
It can also come to the board meeting.
They'd like to voice their.
So the hearing will be scheduled for the 14th of January, which is our next board meeting. At that time, we would consider approval of it, of both calendars at that time too.
I would just note, if we get any feedback and, and we've missed something or have feedback that, that gives us a new insight, I think through the board updates on, during the week, we certainly could apprise you of any changes or tweaks that we make between now and the hearing. We can add voting buttons to the social media post as well. Excellent.
Yeah, I, I would just say, I feel really good about the calendars we've arrived at, and I'm interested in feedback, so I don't want to send that. But, but having vetted it through some groups already, I feel it's in a lot better shape now than it was a month or so ago when we started this process, so it's been progress.
Thank you. Last on our agenda tonight is the annual review of the voluntary retirement incentive program and policies. Linda and Dave will provide a brief update on the proposed revisions at this time.
Yeah, so if I could just make a comment ahead of that, so you may recall our last meeting, and, and so we heard the feedback from the board, so thank you for that. We have some clarity on numbers for this meeting. We also have some clarity, if you remember the conversation, well, if you had the, the handout from last time, it's pages and pages of stuff. Some groups have been grandfathered, some have not been grandfathered, some have been added at different times. We're promoting that a few additional groups be added as part of this. And then we're also talking about a shift to a different way to think about prorating. So we had sort of all that together. So what we've really tried to do tonight is strip it down to like what is actually happening, and it's recognizing all this other complexity still exists. So all the programs that exist for people that already existed, that's already in place. So I think we've really tried to spend some time tonight, taking all of that complexity and distilling it down to, so what's really happening and what's being proposed here tonight. And so hopefully, you'll hear that delineated a little bit differently tonight than maybe you heard when we were last together. So with that, Linda and Dave.
A great lesson of trying to take complexity and try to get it down to make reasonable sense for everyone. So, and I can't stress enough, as we talk about this plan, and because we're talking about two different groups of individuals, please, everybody remember, there's no diminished benefits for our existing workforce. I mean, that's incredibly important that they, they appreciate that we're honoring what we've done in the past, and we're looking forward into the future as to what we may or may not need to change in regards to our programs. So to sort of just hit the highlights for you, so our current employees, our employees who are hired and working for us currently, and hired through June 30th, so this is even future hires for the rest of this, this school year. We've added a couple of benefits for some of our meet and confer groups, along with our hearing interpreters, our paras, and some of our secretaries. So the additions that we've added are within, only within those groups, and there are a benefit that's been added. So maybe a medical benefit was added, or a wellness benefit was added, or something was added to, to equalize their benefits. The probation piece that we talked about last time, that exists for all of our current employees. So that probation is five years, and so 55 and five years, and so we'll continue that probation for all of our existing employees who are with us through June 30th, 2019. And then the one administrative change that we did make is we had inconsistency in the plan in regards to how long you had to be on our benefits in order to receive our retiree benefits. Benchmark, industry, our, our peers, it's all four years prior to retirement. So the one or two that we had that was a two-year requirement, we're bringing all of that up to a four-year. So in a nutshell, that's really the, the highlights of the changes for our current employees. For employees that are hired after July 2019, they'll get all the same benefits that we've outlined, so the, the plans stay in place. However, we will remove the probation and replace it with an eligibility of 55 years and 20 years of service. And then we also had a little bit of a conversation last time about the February 1st date. And with our February 1st date, we have things in our program today that we're able to look at special circumstances and review those on a case-by-case basis. We'll continue to do that. If we find at some point that it really is burdensome for us, and it's, it's difficult, we can take a look at that. But right now, we really don't feel like we need to make it a hard mandate. However, we really do need employees to let us know by February 1st from a planning perspective. So we'll continue to educate our workforce about the importance of that.
And I just want to highlight one more time, the prorating for staff. If you're employed here now, and/or hired through the end of, after June 30, 2019, you will be on a prorated system until you break service with us. So my worry is, people are going to see this, and they're going to say, does that mean I need to retire this year because I'm eligible, but I'm at seven years? And the answer to that is no. Work another year, you'll be eligible at eight years. Work another year, you'll be eligible at nine years. So if you are in our existing system, you will continue the proration, and the proration will continue to grow with you up until the end of the, the benefit. So there's no, what I really don't want is a rush on employees, because we want to keep our employees. So, so it's just, you know, I don't know how we can be more clear on that, that this is an all-good thing, proration exists if you, if you've, if you're working for us now, so.
All right, and I will, any questions?
Well, a question on, on the current employees to receive medical benefits. So if someone was planning on retiring this year, if they didn't have four years prior, they would not receive the medical?
So in the plan today, there's some work groups that have four years and some work groups that have two. Remember that the 2018 is still in existence. This, we're talking about changes for 2019. So 2019 is when this new, the new administrative rules would go into effect. So to answer your question, if they were planning on retiring this year and they had, and their plan was a two-year plan, that would still be honored.
Okay.
Yep. And I think there's only, I don't, you know, I'm looking at Carla, there's only one group that has the two-year, everybody else has four, so.
Now, I'm going to speak to the projected cost of these changes here. If you look at the changes that were presented in the plan for additional benefits that we were looking at, all of our groups are broken down in tables, like Table D, Table J, Table O, Table Q, all these different tables. And if you look at our maximum five-year liability for these proposed changes, what we're proposing, they're not big dollar amounts, and, and you can see that for Table D, which is not salary, non-admin, meet and confer less than 259 days, it's about $18,000, okay? Then you can see Table J, for secretaries, less than 12 months, it's $61,000. For Table O, teacher, associates, and paras, it's $219,000. Table Q is another one that we did, but there was no benefit in the next five years because nobody's eligible till 2029. So it's very negligible impact to the overall cost of the program for the changes that we have made to date from just this last year to the proposed changes. But, and now you want to take a look at what is our estimated cost moving forward. Looking right now, you can see that in FY '18, actual cost for early separation was 2.76 million. This year, where it's projected to be a little bit less, at 2.73. And you can see going forward, it's 2.72, 2.79, and 2.84 accordingly. That's taking into account all these changes as well. That's what's projected. Here's a number that's interesting, is based on our, our proration that we have in existence today. I had Carla Hogan, she actually ran the numbers, and it was a lot of work to run the numbers, but it was for all of our employees who are eligible. It is 10.3 just for the salary and wellness incentive, and another about 2.6 for the medical side of it, to a total of $13 million is the amount that is our liability as of today. And, but don't get too concerned about that number, because we pay that over three or four years, depending on the group you're on. Majority of them are paid over three years. So if you would take a look at this, and I saw it run the numbers over three years, you divide 13 million over three years, it's about 4.3 million. And you take a look at that compared to our annual amount, like right now, it's about 1.6 million on top of what we have, which equates to about 30 cents on our levy. Just kind of give you a, kind of inkling of what that is, so. And roughly, 20% of our workforce is, or at least our teachers retire, who are eligible actually take that benefit. So that's kind of what, majority of this is based on the 20% level for all groups, so.
Yeah, so that liability, just to sort of contextualize it, that liability has been in place from the day we decided to start prorating. So this, this is not a function of anything that we're discussing tonight. We have had this liability since, I don't know, '6, '8, '10, this predates all the people here, so six or eight, 10 years ago, whenever they decided to start prorating, that liability came into existence. So that's not a new, that's not a new number as it relates to any decisions you're making tonight. That is, that is an existing situation in our group. The other related issue is, and this is a little bit terrifying, beyond the money, and money's always important, but people are more so, if all of the eligible employees were to actually leave instead of 20%, it's like 570 employees. It's a fifth of our workforce. So that, that causes me actually to have more sweat on my hands than, than the money. So what we don't want to do is have this drive employees out, and by any means, we want it to be the intended benefit that it is, so.
And also at your work at your place, you have a nice summarized document, that you can see the benefits, how they spread over each group. So I think that is a nice boil down. What it doesn't include is a lot of the grandfather clauses that are there, that makes it a lot more complicated. So if you have seen a document previously, it's a lot more, this is kind of boiled down, and it gave you some additional numbers in it, who's eligible, how many employees there are, so, so that you guys can have that as a nice summary.
And just a reminder to the public that this is all billed against the management fund, which is a separate category that could not be used to purchase more educational staff, or, or it has very limited uses, and is levied, has a specific level levy on our, on our property taxes, so.
Thank you, that's, that's good.
You guys have done a great job too explaining it, so we have a better understanding of, of the plan in place and the benefits.
I just had one really quick thing, sorry, Nancy, did you have something else?
No, no, go ahead.
Okay. So from a benefits administration perspective, for new employees as of July 1, 2019, this kind of stream, streamlines that whole.
Yes.
Policy, right?
Yes, which if you imagine, if you imagine that just from the perspective of people, individuals being able to understand their benefits and what's being offered, it makes it much more clear for them. As well as just from an administrative perspective, sometimes I don't think we have an appreciation for the amount of effort it takes to administer all of these different things and, and having these nuances in between these work groups. It's a lot of work and effort and resources that could be doing other valuable work for us as well.
Yeah, it creates confusion, because one employee talks to another employee, and they don't realize they're a different employee, work group, and so they get a different answer. And then they say, well, why is my answer different? Well, because you're Table J and they're Table Q, and there, you talked to a Table B, and that was the.
And, and here's, here's.
And all just thinking they were people they worked with.
Yeah, and here's the real problem with it that I see from an employee perspective, is it is very difficult for our employees to transfer between work groups. So as they want to progress in their career, do different things, learn different things, it's very difficult, because each time they make that decision, there are wins and losses in making those decisions. And, you know, as we think about our workforce and the future of our workforce, and trying to create career paths and create paths for people to grow and learn, these are the things that we need to start thinking about.
Okay, thanks.
I do want to just, if I can just do a shout-out, I got to do a shout-out to Carla Hogan. Carla Hogan, let me tell you, she is fantastic. She has spent countless, countless, countless hours pulling all of this stuff together, looking at these plans, crunching numbers, doing her magic, and I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you for all that she does.
And this is an action item for the board. All those in favor of approving the voluntary retirement incentive program, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you. At this time, I would like to invite the Kennedy High School principal, Jason Klein, to the podium to provide us with the recognition of a staff person who recently passed away. Following his comments, we will observe a moment of silence for the staff member and his family.
On Thanksgiving morning, Kennedy High School and Cedar Rapids Community School District lost an amazing educator named Rick Neese. Rick was killed when a man fleeing from the police ran the truck he was driving into Rick, and his daughter's stopped vehicle, killing both of them. The loss for Kennedy has been, in a word, unbearable. We all knew Rick is, was a popular teacher, a caring teacher, and a committed teacher. But the depth of his connection to students became immediately apparent when the news of his passing spread on social media. Hundreds of former students wrote incredibly touching things about Rick within hours. Rick was known for being untraditional. He used his guitar and song to connect with kids in a math class, and he connected with them both on the content level, but more importantly, on a personal level. His guitar club has been a staple at Kennedy for as far back as anyone can remember. His open mic night concerts during lunch, during lunch were something that so many of us looked forward to. His one-night concerts raised thousands of dollars to feed the hungry of the world. When I walked past Rick's room for the last time before we lost him, he was playing his guitar and singing. This is nothing new, but for some reason, I stopped for a second and contemplated, this is one of those things that makes Kennedy a special place. In the darkness of all of this, we held a memorial and open mic night for him last Saturday. It was attended by over 400 people. Current and former students, colleagues, friends, bandmates, and even some of his family, all of whom who live out of state, attended. It was an incredible evening of music and tears and kind words about a man who meant a whole lot to hundreds, if not thousands, of students. to hundreds, if not thousands, of students. I'm lucky to be joined today by one of Rick's best friends and the Kennedy Guidance Councilor, Rachel Collins, who is going to read a little bit more about Rick to you.
I might be able to get through this a little more easily than I did Saturday, but I'm not guaranteeing. I'm just going to start by talking about Rick's career and move on a little from there. Rick earned his math degree in teaching and his teaching credential from the University of Northern Iowa in nineteen ninety-five. As a math teacher, Mr. Neese shared his love for life, learning, and music. He was dedicated to creating a classroom environment that was both educational and fun, sometimes a little too much fun. He would play his guitar and sing for students with an occasional harmonica accompaniment, sometimes changing lyrics to familiar songs to teach mathematical concepts, as Mr. Klein has explained. His door was always open for students who needed him, whether or not they were on his classroom roster. Students knew Mr. Neese as compassionate, committed to education and supportive. He offered a listening ear, a shoulder to lean on, and comfort food, including his favorite chocolate chip cookies. We're talking about hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of chocolate chip cookies. Mr. Neese enjoyed the liveliness and energy of the high school culture and took advantage of extracurricular entertainment. He formed and sponsored the guitar club. He attended speech, theatrical, musical, and sporting events, and was invested in helping students raise money for meaningful causes. The beauty of his work was his dedication beyond the classroom. Mr. Neese inspired students to dream big and follow their passions. He cared about the things that students cared about, their hobbies and activities, their relationships with family and friends, their struggles and successes, pretty much their whole world. Rick also strongly impacted his colleagues. Coworkers viewed him as collaborative friend who added a unique and valuable perspective to the profession. Everyone he worked with felt the good vibes he brought with him to school each day. During breaks from work, he would regularly be out of the state of Iowa. He spent summers in Canada throughout his life. He delighted in his time at the family cabin with extended family and friends, playing the guitar, drinking beer, gazing at stars, having conversations that wove through the years, always to be continued the following summer. He was especially happy to share this special paradise with his granddaughter, Jayden, who took instantly to the lifestyle, swimming all day, picking blueberries, catching frogs, playing shake instruments or drums to accompany her GPAW. During shorter work breaks, Rick would visit his grandchildren and children in Colorado. Throughout his journeys, Rick was known as a loyal friend and family member who took the time to visit people he loved, driving a few hundred miles out of his way, if only for an evening of catching up. He loved his mom, Karen, admired her for raising three children after their dad died when Rick was seven, sought her advice regularly, and would often call and visit her in California. Rick had a deep passion for music that intersected with his love for his family. His grandma bought his first guitar in nineteen eighty-two when he was in college. Rick kept meticulous care of this guitar and until very recently, it was the only guitar he ever owned. He enjoyed the open mic format, again, as Mr. Klein talked about. And he often played without shoes on in towns across the country. He hosted open mics in Colorado and Iowa, at pubs, coffee shops, and schools. Rick composed and recorded several original pieces. He played at weddings, birthday parties, all kinds of celebrations, including memorial services. Often making up new lyrics to cover songs, it was his preferred way to give a toast or a roast, whichever the occasion called for. Rick had a goofy sense of humor, was quick to laugh, loved improv and playing games of all kinds, took advantage of every chance to boogie. He was always eager to join in or help out, whatever it was. Whether it was playing golf at six AM, he was not a golfer. Teaching Sunday School, he was a Buddhist. Or manning the barbecue, he was a vegetarian. He had an ageless and timeless quality about him. Rick's friends range in age from two to ninety-two. Truly accepting people for their individual gifts, he found everyone interesting and worth knowing. Rick was not a great fan of clocks or calendars, or renewing his teacher's license. Other things were really important to him. He would prefer to linger over a cup of coffee or a meal, discuss matters profound or trivial into the wee hours, play music as long as the mood lasted. He gave this world more music, more laughter, more humanity, more corny jokes. We're grateful for these gifts, and we will miss him dearly. A scholarship fund in his name has been created at Kennedy to honor him, to honor graduating seniors that embody his qualities. Donations for this fund can be made to the district foundation. And, did you come with a number?
We're over, I believe we're over six thousand dollars right now in that scholarship fund. So been a very good response from the community.
And a celebration of life will be held in February for the greater community. What we did on Saturday was really, really for the Kennedy community. People from all over showed up, which is amazing, but there will be something else to come. So keep, keep an eye out for that. Thank you.
And we'd like to have a moment of silence, please. Finally, I'd like to please remember for the school, for folks to take their school board calendars that have, that was part of your agenda. And with no further business, our meeting is adjourned. And thank each and every one of you, and have a, a great evening.